Good evening, I'm the Mayor of the Gaddell, will be my name, I think I'll go down in history at some. Um, good evening to all our, um, officers, to all the councillors, to all the residents, visitors and friends who have come here tonight. Thank you very much for spending your lovely sunny evening here with us instead of out in the garden or somewhere better, it's very kind of you to be here. Um, my, my first objective is to introduce you to the representatives and to our brand new excellent town council that I'll be introducing you to in a minute. First of all, I'll introduce you to our representatives, starting at the front, ladies first of course. We have councillor Sue Chandler from Kent County Council and then we have Roger Walton from Dover District Council, I don't know your exact title, I'm sorry to say.
Strategic Director.
Strategic Director of Dover District Council. And then we have Kevin Mills, who is the recently appointed leader of Dover District Council. And then we have councillor Dan Friends, who you all know, who is the DDC councillor for Sandwich. And then we have Peter, I've got your surname here, Gip Gibbs from, who is our KCC warden. And finally, but not least, we have councillor David Brazier, who is the KCC highways. Oh, photo problem, that's correct, oh, didn't do too badly there, thank you very much. And they will be available during the Q and A session. If you have any particular, um, questions that are specific to their area, they will try and answer those for you. And then, um, to my immediate left, because you probably don't know who this lovely lady is here, this is Jill Gray, who is our interim town clerk and who has been getting us all into shape and helping us to put things into the right fashion as it were, so. And then on the left, I have my, um, re-elected and new councillors. What I'll do, to save my crockery voice, I'll ask them to stand up and introduce themselves one by one, if that's okay. Starting with, um, a familiar face, councillor Jeff Franklin. Oh, I'm going to ask him.
Yeah, I'm councillor Jeff Franklin, I was the past mayor and, uh, so somebody may know it from the combination, so now I'm now part of Sandwich.
Well, Sandwich Town Council, elected, elected in July last year, re-elected in May and elected to DDC Council in May this year.
I'm Vicky Tobbin, the summer's court, to council in January and re-elected in May as part of the Sandwich Towns group.
I'm Ripley, I'm newly elected.
Good evening, I'm Truka, I'm also newly elected and first time serving as councillor in Sandwich.
Evening, my name is Ed Black, I'm newly elected and first time running for the council.
Good evening, Simon Ladd, newly elected, South of Sandwich South.
Um, coming wild, I was elected last February and re-elected just in May.
I'm in the middle of a break, I was also elected in February, look here.
And hiding in the background, just down there, naughty, naughty lady, is the, is my mayoress, councillor Danielle Carter, who's, um, who's checking up on me from the, from the background. I think she's got the soft fruits and the tomatoes, so. And item number two is apologies, please, how tall?
Yes, thank you very much. So we have apologies from the project committee of our local chiefs, Inspector Beryl Kenney from CSU, KCC leader, KCC members Claire Bell and Susan Carey, and the signers are from Kent High Rise, Deputy Leader for Dover District Council, councillor Barrett, Chief Executive for Dover District Council, the Dean of Services, and Dover District Council Officers, Brennan Mill, David Parish and David Corret, also Sandwich Town Councillors, councillor Fortescue, councillor Anderson and councillor Murray.
And then we come to the, unfortunately, you can switch off now, come to the, the boring mayors annual speech. And, um, I took great enjoyment in, in writing this last night, up until about quarter to midnight, and then, um, and then I found out I had lots of council work to do after that as well, so, so I was up till the early hours there, so. Anyway, let's start off as we mean to go on. Good evening councillors, councillor officers, guests and residents. Thank you very much for coming to the Sandwich Town Council annual town meeting tonight. As your new mayor, it gives me great pleasure to welcome you to the most important meeting of the year. And the reason why it's the most important meeting of the year is this is when we get to hear from the residents and the public, not just the councillors. I'm very pleased to report that the town has a great set of new and re-elected councillors, as you've heard earlier tonight, who have all pledged to work very hard for the town for the next four years they've been elected for. I can also report that we have a great qualified interim town clerk who's working excellently, introducing improvements to the running of the council, and I'm really glad to have Jill on board. And we are currently recruiting to choose a permanent qualified town clerk as I speak. That's already underway, so for this coming week. And unfortunately, we have also recently lost three other members of the Guildhall staff just in the last month of May, so the council's first priority will be to undertake a large amount of recruitment of these posts. And we must get the staffing back to full strength so that we can achieve what we hope to set out. But I would particularly like to point the responsible financial officer, unfortunately she's not here tonight, but the responsible financial officer has stood in whilst we didn't have any town clerk at all, so she was doing all the accounts and finances and covering for the town clerk's role as well. So I particularly want to make note of the responsible financial officer. And also the remainder of the staff from the Guildhall that have all stood behind the council in the last two years with their dedication and loyalty. I also want to take this opportunity to explain what Sandwich Town Council is. And I'm going to actually lead where previous mayors have never actually stepped before, so be prepared. So, um, Sandwich Town Council is really classified as a parish council. It has very few statutory duties and these include the following, just to give you some idea of what we really are supposed to be doing, and those entail the allotments, bus shelters, play areas, community grants, neighbourhood planning and my favourite, public clocks. I didn't know that, but we're in charge of public clock. Now that is all the main statutory duties that this council is supposed to deal with. Although, under section eighty-seven of the Public Health Act nineteen thirty-six, it does give local authorities the ability to provide public toilets, but they have no duty to do so. Yet Sandwich Town Council provides public toilets in free places in this town and, as most of you know, it's high high expenditure maintaining the toilets, but we've been providing them although we don't have a statutory duty to do so. Sandwich Town Council also isn't Dover District Council and we're not Kent County Council, we don't repair the roads, we don't collect your rubbish. All the duties that Dover District Council, Kent County Council do, we don't do, but we will lobby for you on these items. We don't have their budgets, we don't have their resources and we certainly don't have the powers that they have. And we are a town council, though, this is the important bit, to show you, to show you what, what we are doing, that owns and supports the running of the town cinema, that's something that Deane can't even claim to have from a, a, a large council like themselves. We own and support the building of a well-renowned fitness centre, we own and support the building for a very, very successful food restaurant down on the key, we own and support many heritage buildings in the town and we maintain them for future generations. We run regular weekly markets in Market Town, we own and provide parking land for visitors and for events, three of the charge on Kelly's Meadow. We've assisted with the recent expansion of the sandwich medical practice by giving up some of our parking land so that the medical facilities in this town can be expanded. And we directly support the town's majors, major events and festivals. We have an award-winning museum that only opened a few years ago and we have, we will soon have state-of-the-art new archive centre too, which will be one of the best in Kent for archives. Um, we have supported the revamp of the town's major event venue. Outside the window here, we've worked with Dover District Council and Kent County Council to make sure that the Guildhall will be the best event venue in the whole area in East Kent. And we provide the, um, the main town's event venue. You're sitting in a venue which many organisations use on a regular basis, where people get married, where there's conferences, with all sorts of things like that. We oversee and lobby on planning applications, we publish the tourist guides, we lobby Dover District, Kent County Council, central government and NGOs on your behalf. And we host regular consultations and debates, so when there's any major issues, such as fracking or, um, waste facilities posing value, we hold consultations on that. We also liaise with the town's Chamber of Commerce, town teams, shops, businesses and the schools to support and address a wide variety of issues affecting residents and visitors of our fair town. Now, all of this amazing work that we do do is done on one of the lowest ever precepts in Kent. And this precept, in the last two years, the independent coalition of councillors has kept it at zero. So all the other councils have all put their precepts up, but Sandwich has kept theirs at zero for two years. I also realised yesterday, when I was, um, on Tuesday evening, when I was coming from the train station from work, and I realised on meeting a member of the public at the station, how little people know about their councillors as well. And this particular member of the public was, um, really, you know, quite a few issues and, and I had to walk away laughing because I think she thought I was a MP or somebody like that, and I certainly wasn't, so. But we are the unpaid volunteers, we're one of the few councils that don't pay their councillors any allowances whatsoever. And we have never had any specific or specialist training to do the job. In my sixteen years in office, I think I've, the only training I've had has been external training, um, for things like defibrillators and items like that, but no specific training for the job. We also suffer from the ridicule and abuse that a lot of other people get on social media when things go wrong and we work very long hours preparing reports and reading material for meetings. And like the public, we have families, homes and pets to care for. And some, some of us work full-time or volunteer full-time in a lot of the organisations in the town, but we never get thanked for doing a good job, so. And we're not well-paid like MPs who have secretaries and executives, we don't get their privileges and expenses and we're the ones who are prepared to go the extra mile to make this town a better place for free. We have had a very difficult couple of years, but the council is now in a really good position to recruit new staff, to rebuild and plan for a better future under the new leadership. The council's action plan for this year is to appoint a permanent qualified town clerk who will actually help to restructure and restaff the Guildhall and that is the key member of staff that we need. We will then be reviewing the IT and website provision and particularly the website, we all know from, luckily from yourselves, that the website has been our Achilles' heel and that is the second most important thing that we're going to address. We're also going to improve the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund grants application process, which has been criticised over several occasions. We're proposing to set up a standalone charity for the Georgina Maddox legacy and we're going to have members of the public on that, on that charity. It's not going to be a purely council-run charity, we want as much input for the Georgina Maddox legacy as possible. We're also going to review all the terms of reference, the standing orders and also the public partnership, participation. And in previous years, the public haven't had the ability to speak, they've been curtailed to three minutes and three minutes only, they haven't been able to ask councillors what they want and when the public come to speak at council meetings, they literally have to go and take their seats up again and we're not allowed to actually reply to them or thank them at all. So all of that's changing in the new, uh, in the new setup there. And we're going to lobby for the relocation of an apparently unsafe bus stop outside the Guildhall. And also to consider the best options for the tourist information office, which has had quite a bit of controversy over it. And we will be continuing to work, um, she's not here tonight, but councillor Anderson has set up a disability working group and we'll be working with the disability working group and the town team to make the town a lot safer for people to get about and also not suffer any, um, antisocial behaviour, problems like that as well. So I believe that with the public's support for our new council and our new mayor to rebuild and to improve and to plan for a strong, long-term development, then both this council and the town will flourish and it will grow positively in a better direction than ever before. Your council, I can give you tonight, is in a very strong place to make the next four years very successful and very spectacular, so if you can support us, we will support you. And I'd just like to thank you all for listening to me droning on for my bit and now you'll get some sensible people to listen to, thank you very much. Right, item number four on the agenda are the minutes of the annual meeting of the council and their making. This is to approve the minutes of the annual town meeting held on Wednesday the twenty-seventh of April twenty twenty-two and consider any matters arising from those minutes not covered elsewhere in this agenda. The minutes are also available on www.sandwichtowncouncil.garth.uk and printed copies are also available from within Guildhall if you need those at all. That's it, copy here. Yes. And they're put out on your seats as well. I now have to ask my councillors to, um, propose and second these minutes, unless they have any queries on the minutes, could I have a proposal and second please? And could I have a vote those in favour of these minutes please? Or those in favour please, could we have it up? State of London, the council, we have stated, yeah. Okay, so that, that vote will receive a majority, five to four, so that motion is passed, thank you very much. Next, I've got item number five, which is the statement of accounts and this is to receive the un-audited financial statements as of first first of March twenty twenty-three for Sandwich Town Council and Sandwich Tollbridge Fund. The previous year's audited accounts can be accessed at www.sandwichtowncouncil.garth.uk and on the charity commission website. And these were, um, placed out on the seats earlier and given to the councillors as well. I now need to ask if the councillors have got any queries on those accounts. Have any queries on their accounts and I'd like somebody to propose and second please. And I'd like to vote on their accounts, those in favour of these accounts, please raise your hand. Uh, those of saying, please raise your hand. And those objecting. Right, good, so that motion was carried, thank you very much. And item number six, we have updates from guest speakers and councillors. To receive any updates from invited representative guests and councillors and the first, um, representative that I have that's got, um, from the town team, I don't know your position, sorry Carol, but I'd like to ask Carol George to give an update about the town team, would you mind facing the public? Yes, please, I'd be very enjoyed, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for letting me go first, I didn't realise I was doing this afternoon and I've got visitors ahead, so. Good evening to Claire, as a mayoress at the back there, I know the deputy mayor is not here, so I have the council as an obviously residence and everyone from the various organisations that we have here. Um, I'm here to speak this evening on behalf of Sandwich Town Team and to give you a brief overview of what we've been doing in the past year and we hope we'll be able to achieve some more things in the coming twelve months. For those not familiar with the history, then I'll first explain that the town team was originally set up and chaired by the late Sue Laslet, an independent councillor, who was tasked with creating the Mayor of the Plan. This was quite a few years ago now, I thought of the ten or more. Being an enormous task and at a time with only six team members, we decided to focus on one key, one of the key issues for the town at that time. This being the traffic level, speeding drivers and the heavy vehicles that plagued, plagued Sandwich. Actually, it's not quite correct to say that we managed to conduct, um, a survey because, managed to conduct and move that forward, um, because a whistle played by many of those, those issues. We did actually manage to get a permanent, uh, traffic orders in and we reduced the non-essential heavy vehicles entering the town, um, from coming in once every six minutes to coming in every thirty minutes. So, and we did work very closely and gain support from, uh, DDC, KCC and SDC councillors at that time. Spurred on by that success, we wrote a green paper and then a white paper on traffic issues and this initiative, with the support and drive from SDC, DDC and, um, some KCC and some 106 money, allowed us the opportunity of contracting a town planner. Right, eventually, um, this became the vision for Sandwich, the first stage of this being the redesign of the Guildhall forecourt, this being deemed by residents as being the centre and focus of Sandwich. I appreciate that despite the many stages of consultation, not everyone is happy, um, with, with what is, with changes currently being made, but the town team are very happy and proud to see the vision materialise, obviously with the help of funding from the Royal Ancient, DDC, SDC, Discovery Park and, and, and some of our other local businesses. I think it will look amazing and hopefully will be the base that allows our market to once again flourish, many festivals to take place and a beautiful place for, for everyone to sit and enjoy their surroundings with a coffee and the obligatory sandwich. The town team has always worked closely with Sandwich Town Council and after a somewhat difficult year, we look forward to continuing this relationship with a newly formed council and their councillors. Councillor Di Maria and councillor Simon Mann are the two official SDC councillors on the town team. Councillor Dan Friends normally attends our meetings as a DDC representative, um, although many councillors attend our meetings as interested in participating residents, not necessarily there because they are representing council. So, um, uh, we, we actually think in fact councillor or our past mayor has been with the town team as a resident for many years now and we thank him very much for the volunteering he does and has done and hopefully will do in future. I thought it might be good to give you a flavour of the activities that we're involved with and given, um, I didn't have much time to prepare, so I chose to look at the agenda from last week's meeting. Um, we continue to press for an opening date for the Citizens Advice Bureau, which we understand will now be in August and September, and that volunteers are still needed to help run that facility. Um, we, the planning, we've got a town team representative on the planning committee and, um, representing the interests and concerns often raised by local residents. Like many of you, we remain vigilant considering all planning applications and we push for the renovation of the lives in New Street. We continue to harass DDC for the children's play park in King to be refurbished. With, um, help from funding from Southern Water, we promised money after the work on the pumping station and the surrounding sewers was complete. This was some years ago, so we, we really need that part of the town re-established. We support the issues that concern residents with regard to the position of the bus stop in Capital Market. Disability and Access Plan, which the mayor has mentioned, this was an initiative that was originally highlighted by Claire Anderson, then a town team member, now a deputy, now the deputy mayor. Claire wrote a paper on this subject and a separate working group was established, um, with the town team, DDC and KCC representatives, looking at the issues of accessibility for those with disabilities, uh, wheelchairs and, um, buggy users. Literature features are on our agenda and again, we closely work with, uh, DDC to address the many literate issues that the town and actually the culture faces. Working in collaboration with DDC and other volunteer groups, we secured the silicon bins on the key and conducted regular litter picks with various other volunteer groups. A topic of concern that remains continuously on our agenda is the need for an action plan that improves footfall for local businesses and improves tourism and supports the growth of local people using the wonderful shops and facilities we have in Sandwich. We, um, represented the town team on a recent working group on tourism and continue to hope that the tourists committee will be re-established. We find ways of, um, and find ways of promoting Sandwich. As I said at the beginning of this address, traffic management has always been a major agenda item and the issue for the town team. Simon Byers, a member of our team, established a speed watch and lorry watch initiative in Sandwich and continues to push for mobile cameras in the town. In addition to organising, um, In addition to organising speed watch sessions, so expanding the numbers of volunteers would really help with this. So if anyone feels that they could do something, you can help them, please contact the town team. Sandwiching in Bloom is a result of a spin-off from the town team and continues to be successful in brightening and adorning a dawning town with plants and flowers. I chair this volunteer group and wish to acknowledge the tremendous support that SIB, that Sandwiching Women's received from Sandwich Town Council, DDC and many local people. We couldn't do this without our wonderful volunteers. There are just two more items that I'd like to mention. The first being the hit report or the Highway Improvement Plan. In two thousand and eighteen, with the blessing of Sandwich Town Council, we organised a traffic survey with volunteers delivering about three thousand five hundred questionnaires to local residents. We received four hundred and twenty-six responses. That was apparently an excellent result, although not really acceptable by me because I worked in market research and that response rate would have been ignored, quite frankly. However, I set about the original analysis and was helped by three colleagues to work on the open-ended responses, these being specific areas of concern and ideas for improvement given by residents. The greatest area of concern was speeding traffic, with over seventy-seven point five percent of residents rating this as their top priority. The survey results and requirements to address traffic issues in the area form the basis for what is the current hit report. And with the help of SDC project manager, the issues were listed in order of priority on the report for KCC, all fifty-two of them. KCC officers were amazed by the length of this list and when we eventually managed to get an item from them in two thousand and twenty, they explained that Sandwich being a parish, the practice was that only one item on the list would be reviewed by them per year. And even then, funding for that item was not guaranteed and SDC could be asked to help finance it. Covid lockdown and the shortage of administrative staff interrupted any progress that was made, although eventually last year we did manage to amalgamate the five requests from residents in certain roads to adopt or to adapt yellow lines. It was agreed at the last county meeting that given our knowledge, we would work through the hit report, also have prioritising issues raised around access and disability in order to suggest the next most important issue on that list that can be highlighted to KCC highways. We trust that the work, our experience and the data already in place will allow this project to move forward. It certainly isn't one where we wish to see any wheels reinvented. Residents are frustrated, but council must move this forward. As you can see, it's not easy to progress ideas, initiatives and essential activities. And I think we can all understand how frustrating this is for everyone, our councillors included. But the town team do soldier on and I believe works hard for the town and its residents and its businesses. My last item is a wishlist for Sandwich. And we have a brainstorming session booked on this subject on Monday the nineteenth of June at the Bell Hotel. The basis for this wishlist is simple and was created by a town team member. Think about a situation in fifty years' time when you look back at Sandwich and see what action they have taken has made a positive difference to the town. Something essential, fun, an improvement, an idea that supports our youth, the elderly, children, parents, communication, pedestrianisation, priority of pedestrianisation, free marking. The list is endless and was inspired by a town team member who wants to see an active thriving town, as we all do, that is on the map, not just for its history, but for its viability. Thank you very much for listening. If anyone would like to join the town team, please, thank you.
Thank you very much to Carol for doing that. Carol literally stood in at the eleventh hour to put that together. So I'm heartily impressed by what you have down there. And apologies, Richard Ralph, the chair, was not able to make it this evening. But I think we had a super speaker in Carol George there. And the next person to speak is our excellent interim town clerk, who's going to update you on the Guildhall Square and the museum, the Sandwiching Museum. I'll give you Jill Gray.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Hello to everybody. As you know, I'm interim, so I've only been here a match of weeks. So there are only two real projects that I'm aware of that I've had slightly bigger than my few wins. So the Guildhall forecourt is obviously one of them. As I am interim town clerk, I've only been for a few weeks, but I'm impressed with the progress. Make the Guildhall Square Works since I arrived in April. I understand that everyone's keen to see the project completed and I do have regular updates from the project manager, David Parish of Dover District Council. One event in particular that is soon is La Weekend on the tenth to eleventh of June. And David has met with the organisers and another meeting is scheduled later this week. The folk and art festival is organised from the twenty-sixth of June to the second of July and that's clearly another important event for the town as well. The market has continued to operate whilst these works are undertaken and I want to thank the stall holders for their patience during this period, much appreciated. The town council has formed a working group that will be meeting and considering an action plan for the new Guildhall forecourt. But it is important that Dover District Council and Sandwich Town Council work together to ensure that the way forward for the repack space goes as smoothly as possible for everybody. Thank you. The other one is the Sandwich Museum. So the town council museum crew's manager and honorary archivist continue to work hard on the museum projects. Volunteers are always welcomed and if you do want to get involved, please do contact the town council. There are two projects being worked on at the moment. The first is the inventory for the collection and the accreditation process requires that all objects in the collection are identified, including their exact location. Each object needs a unique number and a detailed description, so as you can imagine, that's a lot of work. The second project is repacking and there are areas of the collection that need to be packed properly, so they are protected. This is running parallel to the inventory project. As you've heard, there is a new collection store that has been created and this is really exciting for Sandwich as a town. As soon as we can start working for the new store, the museum crew delighted will be contacting everybody who's expressed an interest and saying, if you want to get involved and volunteer, please do get in contact with the town council, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to our interim town clerk, Jill, and I hope that she will be able to speak in future on other diverse subjects and bring you information that you desperately need and need to know about, which is very kind of you, thank you very much. Item number seven is the questions and answer session. Priority will be given to questions notified in advance of the meeting to the interim town clerk, which allows for a comprehensive response to begin the meeting where necessary. Electors are also invited to direct questions to councillors and representatives on the night. I will ask, if you do have a question, can you please put your hand up clearly? When you stand up to speak, can you please give your name and then post your question and we will find somebody with the skills or ability to answer your question for you, okay? And we have, we have one question and that's wrong, obviously, proceed please.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about the bus stand. A new bus stand has been installed on the corner of the Castle Market junction, where parked buses obscured the sightline, endangering both road users and pedestrians. The planning applications for the forecourt works do not include this bus stand. It did not go through the normal consultation process with the SDC and the public. The previously approved plans were amended behind closed doors. The bus stand alongside the forecourt was shortened and a new bus stand introduced on the corner of the Castle Market junction. This amendment was submitted for an independent road safety audit in April twenty-two. I have a copy if anyone wants to see it. In April twenty-two, which failed to recognise some significant risks to pedestrians, but nevertheless requested that the bus stand be moved further away from the corner. DDC responded by saying buses will be asked to stop further back and only pull forward when absolutely necessary. So when another bus comes up behind and needs to pull out as well, rather than go in sequence. But a raised curb was not installed to facilitate this and buses have continued to park on the corner regardless. Further, as the Guildhall is both a bus terminal and a timed stop where drivers may take a break, buses are frequently parked on the corner for extended periods. This unpublished amendment to the planning application was first installed as a temporary bus stand on commencement of the forecourt works, which was September last year. A DDC liaison officer stated in October that she believed, and I quote, "The buses will be going back to their original position, but in line rather than side by side." And so the deception continued, but by January twenty-three, it had become widely known that the new bus stand at the junction was intended to be permanent. The DDC project manager then stated that the design had been the subject of a road safety audit and no further changes were planned, despite the risk mitigating measures agreed and signed off in the exception report here to the road safety audit not having been implemented. I have come close to being knocked over when crossing the road on two occasions because of the blocked sightline. An eighty-nine-year-old resident told me that a DDC representative had told her there is nothing wrong with the bus stand and that if a bus is parked there, cars should wait. And if she wishes to cross the road, she should use the pedestrian crossing outside Costa instead, meaning she would have to cross five different roads instead of just one to get to the same destination. This is not okay. I want to know what SDC, DDC and KCC are going to be doing to rectify this sorry situation. And if anybody wants to see the road safety audit or the exception report that was signed off, I've got both of them here, but I do know that KCC, DDC and SDC all have a copy of these documents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I will ask perhaps if one of our DDC or KCC members could actually reply to that and give you an answer because obviously Sandwich Town Council doesn't have any authority over the highways. And so the most that Sandwich Town Council could do would be to relay your question to the people that we have here tonight. Would it be possible? Thank you.
I do actually have a lot more information, but I tried to summarise for this evening.
Thank you very much for that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Christine, thank you for that, the long explanation of the situation that we're in with the bus stop now. So perhaps I'd just give a little bit of background as to how this situation has developed. You're correct in saying the original plans didn't include the bus stop in that location. It had a split stop that had stopped the other side of the road and there were concerns around that split.
The plans that were approved in two thousand and eighteen and the variation that was approved in two thousand and twenty-two, which are the only two approvals on the portal, neither of them actually had that stand split like that, they had it nose to tail.
There'd been multiple designs taken forward. The original design, you're correct in saying, had an arrangement here that was then changed to a split arrangement, which then Stagecoach objected to. And so the design that we now have sought to reinstate, the two bus stops adjacent to each other, so that people connecting from one bus to another are able to move between the two stops. And that was the issue that Stagecoach made in terms of a very strong representation. There have been a series of road safety audits, there are now three that have been undertaken and I've seen all three of the safety audits, so I've been reading them today.
I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request, and I was only provided with one relating to that bus stand. So if there are two others, then actually those should have been presented too.
Road safety audits undertaken on the scheme. And as I said, I've been through those today. The third road safety audit is fairly recent and we are working through the response to that. Because there are three, it's raised actually three issues. It's raised an issue with the bus stand, it's raised an issue with the taxi rank and it's a raised issue as to the taxi rank's visibility of coming out of Del Street. And we're responding to all of those. There's no straightforward answer here because in the reality of this, this isn't significantly different to the position that was there originally. Sandwich, one of the benefits of Sandwich is its character, its narrow streets and so forth. But the situation in this sense is no different to what we had originally. Buses did stop, the whole purpose of the scheme from the town team was to try and improve the arrangements out here from, because buses were double stacking, one aside the other. And I've seen that happen in the past as well. So we have a situation here which is not perfect because of the nature of the streets in Sandwich.
The concern isn't so much about the buses against the forecourt, it's the one that parts like on the corner of the Castle Market.
I understand that, but you have a situation which was bad to start with and which we have sought to improve in terms of the street scene outside. We are, Stagecoach have a role to play in that. There are discussions going on with Stagecoach regarding the behaviour of their drivers and how they use the stops, because that is a fact, that they do, as you described, tend to draw forward. And that wasn't how they're supposed to be using the stops, bearing in mind that they were the objectives to the original proposals. So there is a discussion to have with Stagecoach on that.
But there is no raised curb further back and so the buses have to stop where the raised curb is, don't they? Because for passengers.
There is just an issue of space fundamentally. If you move the bus stands further, the bus stop being back, then you are back to having to stop for a single bus again. There are some practical issues here. We understand the concern, we will look at what can be done, but I can't stand here and promise that there is an easy solution to it. And that's the reality of it, yeah.
I think that first of all, we're discussing something that has happened, but nobody ever discusses whether it can be rethought sensibly from the point of view of most of the town who don't think it's a sensible, decent design. Your last few sentences there, by the way, I'm finding it very hard to hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm very interested in this topic. But it seems to me that it's the design which is at fault, not the town, not the town streets and not the history of that bus stop. It's simply the design of that four, I don't know how to describe it, but the front of the Guildhall square. At the moment, in the past, it was a much simpler design and the buses could pull up along behind the other, there were other issues. But now we've got a thing that bends. And I was looking at it yesterday and it's even more bendy than it was before as it comes towards completion. And also I've noticed, because I'm a bus user, when I was waiting at the bus stop and one has to hop between the two because sometimes the country bus comes there and sometimes it comes there, I noticed that when the bus pulls in, when the second bus pulls in, it's actually at an angle in such a way that it's partly sticking out into that street there. So traffic coming in on that corner is also endangered, not just going out on this one. We have a bus that comes in and sits like that instead of like that and its rear end is sticking out beyond Costa on that corner. I think the whole thing is terribly badly thought through, terribly badly designed and no one seems to want to talk about altering it, justifying why it's like it is.
Councillor Chalmers, could you please?
So as a SDC member, I have looked at the various options that have been discussed on the way through. I also, and it's worth talking about this because... I also, and it's worth talking about this because some people who haven't lived in Sandwich for that long may not have had the memory. So I have correspondence going back a considerable number of years complaining about the original iteration of the bus stops, which, which did create the treble stacking and it did create the dangerous situation where traffic was cutting in through the inside bus stop to actually so prevent the buses that were parked there and the pleas of the residents at that time to do something different, basically. Um, it, it is extremely difficult and, you know, there, there has been a huge range of technical assessments that have gone into trying to find a solution. And the issue is, is one of actually trying to enable two buses, which are long vehicles, on different routes to access the stop at the same time, to access that space at the same time. And as Mr Walton said, the original intention was to strike one bus in front of the forecourt and one bus stop the other side where the taxi rank is now. And it was Stagecoach who actually objected to that particular arrangement. So that it went back to the drawing board and considerable effort was put in to try and fit those two buses so that you could have the bus interchange in Sandwich, which, which is important for many, many residents. It is important. Um, in the same place so that those bus services could remain in place. Now, Mr Walton has quite correctly said it's not perfect. And, and if we're going to keep, and, and there have been, so I have also emails from residents who suggest that we don't need buses in Sandwich at all. I don't happen to agree with them, of course I don't. But it, it's just to recognise that there are different views from different people about the buses that go around our town. But to try and achieve that, those two services still stopping in the centre of town and doing that in a way that actually doesn't impede the rest of the traffic has been an incredibly difficult technical solution. The one we have is not perfect. There may be some moderation that can be done to actually improve the junction or, and I know that that will be looked at. But essentially, with the space that we've got, with the need to accommodate two connecting bus services in the centre of town, there is probably never going to be a perfect solution. And there are the reports, the safety audits, have indicated that there are factors, including the twenty mile an hour speed limit and the one-way direction of traffic, which mitigate against the concerns that were raised. So, um.
Yes, I do have that that is on this one. One thing, or two things that concern me. One is that it doesn't pick up on pedestrians wishing to cross the road at all. And yet that is where most of the risk that I am picking up on is. And actually, those are the two incidents involving myself personally, was trying to cross the road and a vehicle coming round the other side of the bus. It couldn't see me. I couldn't see it. But, but the other thing I'm really unclear about is why did this not go through consultation with STC? Why did it not follow this, the ordinary planning application process? I mean, I'm completely mystified as to how it managed to escape all of that.
Well, highway works fall outside the planning process. So that, that's the basic fact of that. So if you go right back to the original planning application, the highway works were conditioned because they're separate to the design work that was done for the Guildhall Square itself. Planning rate, the planning, as a planning authority, Dover District Council has no remit over the design of highways. That is own matter of highways. So there's no consultation process associated with highway works for that level of detail. In terms of the scheme itself, the plans are on display. There was an exhibition immediately before the work started and those plans were on display at that time.
But not including this. Can I, like, I know this sounds really simple, but we have, we're going to have a bus shelter there. There always was a plan for that. As long as there are some seats in the bus shelter, why cannot the timetable be changed slightly in order that the first bus, whichever that is, comes in and five or ten minutes later, that bus is gone and the next bus pulls in? So that you have one bus stop serving two different bus routes and you'll never have, and you'll only use one bus stop, the one in the centre, right next door to the bus shelter? So that you don't ever have to have a bus stop at the end there. I, I, I know that the original plan that we saw as a town team had, the second bus stop was definitely over by Ozis. One thing I don't remember was, and I may be wrong, was the pathway being expanded on the other side of the road. I don't remember that. All I remember was that we had asked for double red lines or to actually stop any parking there whatsoever. And that was a concern about just one stop and the fact that traffic had to continue to move around. But I don't understand why we just can't ask. And I understand exactly how difficult Stagecoach can be. I know they, they offered, they threatened to withdraw the service when, the service when we wanted to get them around breezy corner with a bollard. So I, I know what happened there. But my concern now is that we're not asking them to do anything other than perhaps change that timetable slightly so that only one bus at a time pulls in to the centre of one bus stop.
Okay. So, um, that's entirely, sorry.
Thank you, Karen.
That's entirely within the remit of Stagecoach, but I'm very happy. We could help perhaps to Mr Brazier to take that to our public transport team and, and put that, put that solution to Stagecoach.
Thank you.
I can't predict what happens.
I know you can.
Just in, you talked about the extension of the pavement on the other side.
Yes.
Yeah. That was always intended to be widened, which means now that people in wheelchairs can get down that pavement unimpeded. There will be a additional parking restriction that is put on the far side of the road. There are two ways of doing it. It's either a red line or it's, it's yellow vertical lines along the pavement, which effectively means no waiting at any time. So that will come through a traffic regulation order in the future.
Thank you very much for that. That's John. We have just, sorry, we have, so Councilor Wilder was next to speak. I just wanted to mention that when the Mercury were here a few weeks ago, someone who may remember, I was there with Councilor Marie, who is a coach and bus driver. And we looked at the existing bus configuration and his view and mine, although I'm not an expert, was that if you continue the line of the bus stop here by another four or five metres into what is the temporary tarmac, which is soon to be paved over, then that would give enough for two buses end to end. So a bus is twelve metres long. So you need twenty-four metres plus another six metres for getting around the bus in front. And I think what we need, Roger, is for the project manager to come down here before the work is complete. And if there is the possibility of that adaptation being made, then it needs to be done quickly. But we do need a site meeting ASAP. And if it's not possible, then that's fine. You know, we need better communication and discussion about this because that is dangerous. And at some point, someone will be knocked over and that's when we'll have to take action. Thank you for that, Councilor. And Council, um, tactically.
You've also created a hazard for the drivers, not just pedestrians and buses. There's a white line across the road outside number ten, Capital Market. Drivers are expected to stop, give way, when they can see what's coming. But you can't see a thing with all the buses there. Something's got to give. On a light on that corner, is that not light power when you come out? There's a white line across the road. If you stop to give way, you cannot see anything.
Have John.
I'm quite sure that it is possible to have two buses behind each other with a little bit of reconfiguration, as Councilor Wilder just mentioned. When I came in just now, there was a bus marked there on the corner and there's somebody in the lower lane. I've only got a little man and I couldn't get through. And I've got somebody getting really frustrated with a bigger man than mine or a bigger vehicle than mine having a problem. People coming out of the motor sold, it is highly dangerous. I agree with, Councilor Marie told me about this business about, you know, he's looking in his mirror and he's not looking. You can't look in his mirror and in front at the same time. So somebody comes out of the motor sold, he looks in his mirror and turns out. This is stupid. This is absolutely ridiculous design. And it can be reconfigured, like you said, there is some temporary tarmac there. You can take that away. Maybe at this end, a little bit as well, and you can get two buses behind yourself, I'm quite sure. I've seen them parked behind each other in the past. They don't need to be double parked, just behind each other. It's common sense.
I'll take one, one last question, one last question on this one. Because Ken County Council have said that they will be taking this back to review it. And Sandwich Town Council would definitely be fighting pedestrian safety on that corner. So one last question.
What I was hoping to say is, it's a pig's ear, isn't it? Wherever you go out there, people are parked in the road, you've got the buses, you've got people trying to walk, you've got cars. It's a pig's ear. Whoever, whoever's pulled it out really shouldn't be in a job. Because somebody's going to get killed there and I hope they'll be pleased at the end of the day with their pigs here what they've done.
Thank you very much. So I was detailing that question. We've got quite a large number of questions coming up. And the second one that I want to move on to, because this must be covered tonight, particularly with the representatives we've got here tonight, is my own question, which is the question of the Richborough Transfer Side, which I promised would be raised tonight. And that's why I must move on with this one. And obviously everybody's seen the, the Ken County Council have put out this proposal. The proposal has three options and all three options are for the closure of the Richborough Transfer Side. So what I'd like to do now is go into this question now. I would like to ask somebody from Ken County Council, if they could, just to update us and give us the actual facts and reasons behind this. So there isn't this social media fur form on that. So I'd like to ask Councilor Chandler to give us the facts and figures behind the issue. And we can take up questions after that. Thank you.
Um, so the, there was a paper published last week, which went to our growth, our Environment and Transport Cabinet Committee on Tuesday, which contained a proposal for savings which need to be made on this particular directorate of, the intended savings are one and a half million. There are three options outlined in, in that paper. And as the mayor quite rightly says, all three options identify both Richborough and Cavanisham household waste recycling centres for closure. There are, there are some other different options around reduced, reduced days of opening at other sites and the possible closure of two others. So the Cabinet Committee yesterday voiced many of the concerns that were voiced in the emails that I've received over the last few days. And I have already sent to the Cabinet member for Environment and Waste my own objections to that, to those particular proposals. And I have summarised the comments and objections that all the residents who've written to me have made. The Cabinet Committee agreed with the Cabinet member. They changed the recommendations on paper. They agreed with the Cabinet member that they would set up a working group which would have an input because they wanted more information as to how this was actually arrived at. And they wanted to have a greater input into the proposed consultation documents. They're setting up a working group which will have an input into the consultation papers when they go out. And one of the aims of that is to make the consultation a real consultation as opposed to one that simply closes Richborough. So it is likely that that consultation will still go out on the nineteenth of July, which is the date identified. Everybody will have an opportunity to respond to that. And I sincerely hope that there are more options on, on the consultation than currently are proposed. But I just wanted to reassure everybody that A, I share your objections and I have articulated those very clearly. And B, I have made sure that all those objections that have been sent to me have been summarised and sent to the Cabinet member as well. I will make sure that everybody is aware when the consultation is launched. I mean, it will be coversized widely, but I will make sure as well. And if there are any updates to be given on the way, then I will be able to do that to, to the town council.
Thank you very much for that. Councilor Chandler, did anybody have any further questions on this at all?
Again, Will Cox. I'm somewhat confused because there seems to be, like a lot of you, you're objecting to this proposed closure. But there seems to be a way of signing a petition, that there seem to be two. And I'm concerned that one of them, well, both of them appear to ask quite a lot of personal details. And I'm concerned about what happens about those details. Now, I do want to object, don't get me wrong here, but I'm very concerned about how safe we are with signing these petitions.
Thank you for that. I'm not actually aware of the, of the two petitions. But I know there is some work being undertaken by Councilor Friends. And was your petition at all? Was that collecting personal data?
Yeah, so the information that I've circulated is not a petition. It's for people to sign up for mailing lists so that when the consultation goes live, we can then alert people to make their representations to KCC directly. In my experience, I'm sure Mr Mayor will agree, when we've had issues like this before and we're planning, petitions tend to help in the short term, but not with the official response. Because when we do need the responses officially to KCC, people are under the impression that they've already signed something and then they don't do it again. Whereas getting that list of people who are interested proves much more fruitful because then we can alert them to the official consultation whilst it opens. And that tends to generate a lot more comprehensive submissions. So that's the impetus behind the information I'm putting out and getting people to sign up with their mailing lists. But, you know, I'm registered with the ICO, I'm fully comprised of GDPR. That's why I use a third-party company to authenticate and secure my mailing list through mail jet, which most people have probably, sorry.
Is that not somewhere?
No, they're basically Europe. So they have to have European credentials to be able to qualify for the GDPR exempt.
Thank you very much for that. I would, I would say that obviously the consultation will be coming out from Ken County Council on the nineteenth of July. So obviously there will be that overall opportunity. And one thing I will say tonight, because I know somebody will tell me off if I didn't say this, but obviously not everybody is on the internet. So it's obviously very helpful if there's, if there is an ability to, if you can't log on to the official consultation, that there are other options to do that. And Sandwich Town Council will put themselves forward to help anybody that hasn't got access to the internet to make sure that their consultation could be put forward, whether that be the use of a computer or somebody inputting information for them in a private office or something like that. So, any further questions? I think, was it, Councilor Chukka first?
Thank you. So I've got a couple of points to make. Councilor Chandler, one of the things that was totally missing from the proposal was an environmental impact. The wider environmental impact. That needs to be factored into the paper for people to make the right decisions. The increased travel that people undertake to go to other sites, potential to fly to paint to increase. All of that completely missing and I suppose the seam was set by the, the. And I suppose the scene was set by the councillor who presented the paper. Her very first opening line was, this is all about saving money. And that set the scene. And there were some great objections from people in that meeting, really good objections. So I would like us as a group to look at how we're going to object. Councillor Friend, in terms of capturing information, wise to do so. But some people have come to me already and said, this includes a marketing exercise, that other efforts that might happen by yourself, but particularly by the Conservative Party. If that isn't true, that needs to be made very clear to residents, because some people said back to me. In terms of the online petition that exists, that is a tool, regardless of whether people think it has a short-term lifespan to it or not. It is one way people can actually voice their objections to what's been proposed. It has a value, but it isn't an end to a means. It's a way of saying, people have talked, this features in our arguments. What I would suggest is we should be looking at an action group that calls on people living in Sandwich, but also some of the other political parties that already are quite active in Deel and Dover, who actually are talking about Richborough. Fans as well, talking about Richborough. So it's not just a sandwich issue. So if we do this, let's do it sensibly, let's do it together, not do it very often in different ways of actually devaluing what we might get as a bigger group.
Thank you very much for that.
I would, I did watch the whole of the video of the discussion at KCC. Three things came out. First of all, at the moment, they're not accepting petitions. I don't know which. Secondly, please correct me, I thought there was only one site that was going to close on all three options. Perhaps you'd rather, please let me finish. Look, I mean, looking at the document of the publication, it's one side. And the third thing is that a lot of the councillors say we have got completely insufficient information in this paper, and have demanded that it gets rewritten. And the thirdly, councillor, KCC has to throw a decision about going out. At the moment, it says it will be consulted, but at the moment, it's still got to have a formal meeting to take that consultation forward. Please correct me if I'm not wrong.
So I'm pretty sure that I'm right, that Richborough and Cavanisham are in the same category. In that case, however, you know, that the... So the most effective, can I just go back to the previous speaker? The most effective way to respond is to make sure that as many people as possible respond to the official consultations when it comes out. The Cabinet member has, I think, not suggested as yet that the consultation date will be deferred. There is a possibility that it might. But the working group was set up in such a way that it would then go back to that Cabinet Committee, which occurs just before the proposed consultation date for the consultation. So that's not within my hands, or, you know, that's in the democratic system that we have at KCC. So it is, of course, sensible for any group that wants to, to send a collective response as well. But please make sure that if you contribute to a collective response, you also send your own personal response. Numbers matter in the consultation process. So that's quite important. I quite agree with most of the reasons that you're talking about there, and they're already in my summary that's been sent to the Cabinet member. And as you said, they were articulated at the Cabinet Committee yesterday.
Thank you very much for that. Did we have anybody else with any other questions on this subject?
Yes, not everybody has internet access to make an appointment to go to the tip. On another occasion, we don't go very often, but when we do, there are more members of staff down there than are people actually using the tip. Because they don't have a way with Autobooks Online. And if you use the telephone number to ring up, it just returns you to website.
Thank you very much for that.
Consultation seems a bit of a joke to me, because I'm quite sure that ninety-nine point nine percent of the people will be against it. So what is the point of having a consultation? But I have a suggestion. If it is all about money, white clothes, a tip for two days a week, not weekends, okay? And charge everybody a pound, a nominal pound. Now, before Covid, that place was really busy. Covid came along, we had to make appointments. Now, I read it's not so busy, but I'm sure that's something to do with the appointment system. Charge them a pound is not a big deal. If I want to tip a load of stuff and I've got to pay a quid, oh wow, that's not a big deal. That's better than going to Whitfield, it's a cost of more than that. And environmentally, that's nonsense. And then the flight tipping issue, of course. You know, it's going to cost KCC a bucket load of money, in terms of flight. Because that's what will come. So to close Richborough, which is a big site, it's a good site, you can have many, many years. You need to keep it up.
I was chair of the Ray ten years ago. Ten years ago, Liz Carter was over there, the other Liz Carter. And rescinded the decision. I recall speaking at KCC on the issue. And there were several things, and I just agree absolutely with you. We had excellent people in our action group from all the political parties. We made measurements of the environment, of the environmental impact, the journeys that people had to take. And I know I have prejudice because of representation, but there is a high possibility that some people might come into Deel. And those of you who know the Household Waste Recycling Centre in Deel will recognise that that street is appalling. If, even now, let alone increased volumes of traffic, then Richborough is, I would argue, the most easily accessible household waste recycling centre in Kent. I think the only other thing, forgive me, it's not KCC that will pick up the bill for any flight tipping. It's DDC. And I greatly am aware of the incredible pressures that KCC and DDC have in relation to central government cuts for major proportions, and the urgent need to balance books. But there is balancing books and policies of life in my view, and impacts, and what is the most efficient. And I just hope that that action unit, from represented across the way, takes place. Sorry councillor Ray, I seem to remember when I said that speech in the council chamber. You stood up and spoke and belittled all those petitions. I have never forgotten it. And I can assure you that the people who signed the petition ten years ago, and the people who are moved to fight any decision regarding the closure of Richborough are not actors. We have knowledge, we have experience, and we have the right to be heard. And that hearing to be successful as it was ten years ago.
If there's not any more questions on Richborough, I'd like to open the floor to any other questions from residents tonight. This is, as I said, an annual opportunity. If you have got any puffbear issues that you'd like to ask, whilst we've got our excellent representatives from the authorities here. And please do put your hands up if there's any further questions. John?
Sorry, it's me again. I'm very much interested in the environment, as you can know. I am very, very concerned about what's happening in East Kent in terms of losing green space. Now, we've had examples in Sandwich with St George's Road, with Tullisheep Walk. And currently, although it's outside of our area, officially, but only just, with Bedstander Park, stuff going on there, either on the park or on the other side of the road, Bedstander, there's a lot of it. It is currently being destroyed. Bedstander Park hasn't even, the developers of Bedstander Park, from the surfview and the hotel, don't even have planning permission yet. And yet they're destroying the place already. It's being fenced, and they're digging up plants which actually aren't protected, including lizard orchids, which is the second biggest colony of lizard orchids in the country. It's a very rare plant, and it primarily currently grows in East Kent. There are odd sites, very small sites, where golfers have taken a seat on their boots and, you know, odd ones turn up, one turned up in my garden, but that's another. You know, it's a very important site, important site for turtle dust, which are gone by more than ninety-five percent in the last ten years. And they're breathing air, they've just destroyed a whole area of space, green space, on the other side of the road of the tip, where turtle dust were breathing last year. And there will be none of that, this way, that pond, yeah?
Hours of pollen in Sandwich.
It is a disgrace. There will be more. If you go to Fannett, you know, go to Margate, you see these huge fields that are ready for development. Go to Sheldon, Sheldon, worse, Sandwich, Margate, it will all be one time one day. Not above that one, I believe. But it will be, okay? I want Sandwich Town Council to go to DDC, KCC when necessary, and say enough is enough. You've got to fight it. It might be outside our area, but only just, because that surfview, they are expecting two hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred odd thousand visitors a year. Now, I live at Wurts, and the road coming from Dilly Road onto the main road is a nightmare up at Bunnies. Imagine, seven hundred and fifty thousand visitors coming past my house. So please, for Sandwich Town Council, serious pressure on DDC, environmental crime, environmental enforcement, who are doing sweet fanny ads, and I know that because we have initially worked, it's been going on since the first lockdown, environmental enforcement, planning enforcement, sorry, nothing. They promised, promised, and nothing happens. And they really need to have pressure put on them. And I want Sandwich Town Council to take this very, very seriously, please.
Is there anybody from that district council that could reassure the development issue at all? Or just give some sort of assurance, because I'm not up with all the DDC policies of what's happening there.
I mean, what I was going to say is that the Bedstander proposal, so it's a live planning application. I understand it's unlikely to go to planning committee over everything July. That's what I would suggest, and that's what I was going to add. That's me, at the moment, in terms of what the decision will be. That's my second planning committee.
Well, I just want Sandwich Town Council to be aware of it, and keep the pressure on DDC, and on the build of big hotels on the rubbish dump. And some of you will remember Adam Fan, are you? Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I must say, this has been raised in Sandwich Town Council already, and at the planning committee as well. It is outside Sandwich Town Council remit. And we have discussed it, and it was discussed that Sandwich Town Council would be writing in to object against it. And the members of Sandwich Town Council were asked if they wanted to, it's their choice whether they want to or not, to write in and also object against it. And once again, as has been said by councillor Chandler tonight, is quite often, and I was at the planning committee, if you look at Christina's wonderful videos that she does, I actually objected against Sandwich Town Council writing in at all. Because if sixteen of us write in as Sandwich Town Council, that is one vote, that is one objection. If sixteen town councillors write in, that's sixteen objections. But we decided in the end to go for both. So councillors can write in and object if they want to, and Sandwich Town Council will be objecting as well, but not officially, because it's not within our remit area. But we will do our best to support that. Were there any other questions to raise at all?
Thank you. My name's Tomlin's. Questions, in fact, for this is Chandler. My question to you is how on earth can you justify the selling and effective framing of the future of our infant school secretly?
So I just mean to make clear to everybody here, we have not sold the infant school. What Mr Tomlin, I think, is referring to is the fact that a residential property that was, is effectively adjacent to the school, which in times gone by, when such things were built in that way, was the headmaster's house for the school. It was for some years occupied by a nursery. And the nursery then stopped business, and the property became vacant. There were originally some moves to rent it, and there were no potential tenants. We then had Covid, it's taken a rather long while. And the decision was taken to actually sell that property. Now, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that the school could make use of the property as additional teaching space. In fact, the school currently is undersubscribed. It's not up to its maximum number of pupils. I do know, because the chairman of their governors was at the last meeting, and I had a conversation with him afterwards, I do know that they have one new group, which is up to capacity, but one new group, I believe. And so the decision was made that if the school did not have either the budget or the capacity, they are an academy, that school, and so the academy could have chosen to make an approach, which they didn't. And so the decision was taken to actually sell that property. It's not an integral part of the primary school, it is quite separate. So I should say that I had a number of residents who approached me to inquire whether they could use the building for various uses. We have a policy, KCC has a policy for properties which become vacant, a very defined policy about how we then treat that property. And it is about, it is about three things, value for money, transparency, and fairness. So we could not offer it to one group in preference to another group. We have to be open about these things, and we have to be fair. And so the Cabinet member responsible for these things made the decision to sell it at auction. I have to say that I didn't have a formal approach from either the head teacher or any of the governors. When the property originally became vacant, we did have, I did have, several meetings with governors and some four, five years ago, several meetings with governors and the head teacher, the head teacher at that time, with the prospect of the school utilising the space to operate a nursery. The school and the governors at the time decided that that was not a route they wished to pursue. You know, I was sad in a way, because I'm very passionate about early years education, but that was their choice to do. So that is how we got to that point. But just to reassure everybody else, we have a lot sold off primary school. It is a separate building.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Chandler, people are probably more deeper knowledge than I have, because I'm only recently become councillor. I stumbled across the intended auction just by walking down the streets. I suppose my question is more, a general question in a sense, do you think consultation in terms of Sandwich residents having knowledge about what was intended, and Sandwich Town Council formally having a two-way conversation with KCC was good enough? Because I would suggest, from the feedback we got and the reaction that was... Because I would suggest, from the feedback we got and the reaction that was volcanic in a very short period of time, suggests that was in the case. And we then turn to Richborough, and Richborough, people are already a bit suspicious about timings of preparation going into consultation. You have to question, are we again going to be sold short as a community in terms of getting the right design?
Okay. So the schools were advised of the intention some months before that happened. We, I go back to the fact that we have a set down policy about how we deal with vacant property going over there. And it is not, how can I put this? I'm not quite clear what you're suggesting would have been the purpose of a consultation in view of the fact that we would have been still obliged, if we were disposing of the property, to put it on the open market in view of the criteria that we have to comply with.
As far as the outcome is concerned, it's the journey to that outcome. What didn't happen was, that's based, the time, where the community could understand what was being planned. And you've already said that the school consulted. So that in future, because you've already mentioned, you went to a meeting where the board of governors were there. So it's all a little bit fuzzy in terms of actually doing it in a managed, measured way.
Okay, you can clarify when I have those meetings. I had those meetings with the governor and head teacher some five years ago. And at the time, I would report it back.
Things changed, should be a change.
Of course, things changed, but that's my point.
The governor's changed, in fact.
They did, and head teacher changed, yeah. So I appreciate that. But the school did have the opportunity to understand what the intention was.
Councillor Black. I'm sorry, Councillor Chandler. First of all, I have to declare an interest. My partner is a TA for the school, I know quite a bit about it. But that's passed now because it's sold. I think you're trying to defend the indefensible. So first of all, that house is an integral part of the site. By selling it off, you devalue the site as a whole. You've sold it for probably two-thirds or a half of its market value. You say the school is undersubscribed, that's true. But we've had 200 houses in Sandwich in the last year or so. The rolls will increase. Year one is already oversubscribed. So that school has about 25 TAs because of integrated education. You've got children there that are kicking, biting, running off, being disruptive. They need space for those kids to be taken away to a private space where they can not be disruptive to other children. And that schoolhouse, the old schoolhouse, would have been an ideal property for that. It's integrated, it's part of the old building. Yes, you're right, they didn't want, the academy did not want to buy it, but they would like to have rented it. And that would have been a short-term or a medium-term option until the future of that whole site was decided, at which point the whole site would have been much more valuable than it is now because it's been devalued by... And there's also safety issues. Whoever buys that house is looking directly into a school playground. So that has to be thought about. I think KCC are selling off the council silver, the family silver, for the sake of short-term profit, short-term revenue, because they're in financial trouble.
One last question, please, because we're now at our time limit now.
My pleasure, Price. I'm coming in a bit less filled with this because I'm not familiar with all the detail being got. But KCC could have made the property available to a community land trust or a community land housing group, if we have one, I'm not sure we've got one. We could afford one quite quickly. They could have engaged with that and that house could have been put into affordable housing for local people. It wouldn't be Prime Minister, it wouldn't be Airbnb, it wouldn't be sold off. It would be available for local people. And KCC, from my understanding and having seen a report, I think they're doing 2020, said that they don't have to dispose of properties at market value or for the best price they can get. They can engage with community land groups. And that might have kept that house, I don't know if it'd be used, but it might have left it available to us.
Thank you very much for that. So just before I close the meeting, I just need to make a bit of a public announcement. And just to say, unfortunately, we're losing our PCSO, a very nice lady called Debbie Bishop, who's been with us for three and a half years. But I hasten not too much about worries because I've been told by Peter Gill, our KCC warden, that we are getting a full-time warranted officer, I believe, that will be coming up shortly. But Debbie Bishop will be finishing on the 2nd of June and I believe she will be liaising in the H concern building. Is it around about lunchtime, is it?
Half past one to three o'clock.
Half past one to three o'clock. If anybody wanted to sort of go and see her and say goodbye, we're not losing her entirely. She's joining the Kent Police Rural Task Force, so she won't be too far away. And Sandwich Town Council will be ensuring that we do have adequate police cover going forward, which was promised by the police commissioner. So I just wanted to say, thank you very much to all our representatives for coming tonight and giving your opinions and advice and help. Thank you for that. I want to say thank you very much for Christina, for her unstintingly filming of all of these in her own private time. And I must hasten to add, Christina is not paid to do this by the council or anything like that. She's literally representing democracy at local groups. So welcome to Christina. I want to thank the councillors that have come tonight, because it's always nice to have all the councillors here to see how this operates. But most importantly, I'd like to thank everybody in the audience because without you, this meeting just would not happen. So thank you very much, and I'd like to close the meeting and bid you a good evening. Thank you, goodbye.